We'll call this meeting of the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, January 20th, 2021, to order. I would ask before you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance that we all take a moment of silence, or reflection, or prayer, to honor the 400-plus thousand people who have perished from COVID-19, as well as to have blessings on this country and the 46th president who will take office.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning again, and I would have all of our row offices introduce themselves, but due to the pandemic and trying to make sure that we are keeping distance, we only have one here, that's Brian Monroe, if you want to wave, but Brian will be talking to us shortly, so. In the meantime, we also have a proclamation today because it is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and Commissioner DeGialamo will share that with us.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is a proclamation recognizing Human Trafficking Awareness Month here in Bucks County. And I know we have some representatives from the -- I'm going to ask to call them up when I finish reading the proclamation. Whereas human trafficking is a borderless crime against individuals that violates the most basic human rights and deprives victims of every shred of personal freedom. And whereas human trafficking occurs when a person is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through forced, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of sexual or labor exploitation, involuntary servitude, or other types of mental and physical abuse. Whereas human traffickers target impoverished and marginalized children, women and men, isolating them from society and supportive networks, and exploiting them for personal and monetary gain. Whereas human trafficking is a multi-billion-dollar criminal industry that denies freedom to 24.9 million people around the world. Whereas the U.N. estimates that more people are now harmed by human trafficking worldwide than have been at any other point in human history, those most impacted are women and girls, or 75% of the total. Whereas an estimated one out of seven endangered runaways reported to the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children were likely child sex trafficking victims. Now therefore do we, the Board of the Bucks County Commissioners, Chair Diane Ellis-Morseaglia, Vice Chair Robert Harvey, and Jean DeGialamo, hereby proclaim January 2021 as Bucks County Human Trafficking Awareness Month throughout the county of Bucks. In so doing, we offer our support to the Bucks County Coalition Against Human Trafficking, a project, a network of victim assistance, and its missions to eradicate human trafficking within our communities and enhance human dignity for all. We wish the Coalition continued success in this endeavor on the occasion of its 70th anniversary. And with that, I'd like to call up, because I believe they're here, Julie Dugery, who's from NOVA, who's the co-chair of the Bucks County Coalition Against Trafficking, Cindy Labarre, who's with the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission Approval of Care Manager for BCAT, and also Chelsea Jackman with Deputy District Attorney, Chief of Human Trafficking. Julie, if you'd like to come to the microphone, if you have remarks. Congratulations to the three of you.
I just have a few comments that I wanted to share. I'm the co-chair of BCAT. Karen Quitzner, who is my co-chair, wasn't able to be with us today, but she's watching, I think, on TV. I'm really happy that Chelsea and Cindy are able to be here. They are members of our steering committee, and as the Commissioner said, NOVA, BCAT is a project of NOVA, the work of victim assistance. I want to thank the Commissioners again for helping to raise awareness about the crime of human trafficking by issuing this proclamation. Since BCAT was established in 2013, we've been making steady progress in raising awareness, and most importantly, improving the community response and support services for survivors of human trafficking who live among us. They can be our coworkers, students in our schools, a teen in foster care, or someone we know who is struggling in recovery, someone who lives in a shelter, works in a local business, or is the victim of domestic violence. BCAT has gathered a network of dedicated partners from our nonprofit agencies like NOVA, A Woman's Place, Worthwhile Wear, Valley Youth House, and the YWCA, to county departments like Drug and Alcohol, Children and Youth Services, the Area Agency on Aging. We have partners in the District Attorney's Office, the Bucks County IU, and our local police departments. We work with healthcare providers, groups like Seroptimist of Indian Valley, faith-based partners, and members of our legislature. I just wanted to share a few of the ways that we have worked to improve support for survivors in the past year. The YWCA is partnering with The Well and with support from the county is offering safe, secure housing and wraparound services for survivors. The District Attorney's Office, along with Ben Salem Township and the Ben Salem Police Department, worked with NOVA and AWP advocates to produce and distribute the training video to police departments all around the county. The multidisciplinary team at the Children's Advocacy Center attended a training to help them provide better trauma-informed services for child victims. BCAT's Community Outreach Committee conducted outreach to help local hotel managers and staff learn the signs of human trafficking and how to report it. And just recently, one of the managers that we spoke with did identify and report two teenagers that were being trafficked at the hotel in the county. The case is currently under investigation. Eradicating human trafficking is one of the many challenges our community is grappling with, but we can help to make change, and there's a role for everyone in our community. We ask that folks learn more about trafficking, share what they learn with others, and engage with BCAT to support these efforts. This month, we're offering lots of opportunities for people to learn, share, and support. We have a virtual community meeting on January 27th. People can visit local businesses like Calm Waters and Chumayo to see art created by survivors, and you can also participate in the Red Sand Project. This is an artistic initiative where community members can use packets of red sand to fill in sidewalk cracks, a simple display, but it draws something, it draws your attention to something that you might overlook every day, just like victims of trafficking who are around us. We have red sand here in the back of the room, and you can go to the BCAT Facebook page to find locations to pick up red sand around the county, and more about events taking place this month. Again, thank you to the Commissioners and to the leaders in the county departments, and to all the members of the Bucks community who are helping to raise awareness of human trafficking. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you want to come up and get the commendation? I don't know if you want to do a quick picture, sort of, try to do that down here and distant. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing. And now, as promised, our Clerk of Courts, Brian Monroe, is going to do a presentation on the Delinquency Recovery Program.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I appreciate you having me. So again, just to remind everybody again, I'm Brian Monroe. I am the Clerk of Courts here in Bucks County. I was elected in 2019. We started in January of 2020. So what is the Clerk of Courts? As a brief little reminder, essentially, on the criminal side of the court system, one of our main responsibilities is collecting and distributing court costs and restitution. So what typically will happen is when a defendant goes through the criminal justice system, towards the end of their process, they will be assigned, through a judge's order, court costs, or restitution, which is money that's owed back to the victim. So let's, for an example, let's give a certain defendant $2,000 in court costs. So that comes to us, and then we then contact the defendant and set them up on a payment plan, and then we get that money back for the county and the state. And again, if it's victim's restitution, that money goes to the victim. What will typically happen is the defendant, who is typically at not a very good point in their life, they might not have the money to afford the court costs on a monthly basis, so they will start, I guess, going into the rears, right? So if they have to pay $50 a month or $100 a month, before too long, if they, you know, after spending money on their groceries, after spending money, you know, for gas for their car, they can't afford it, so they, they'll get another letter from us, basically saying, you know, you're getting behind on your payment. And if, after about 90 days, if they continue to be delinquent, then they go to a collections agency. So problem with that is then they add 25% on top of it. So these individuals eventually find themselves not only in long-term debt, but the county also finds itself basically in a position where they're not getting their money. So what the DRIP program is, that I'm here to talk to today, is something that actually started in a smaller county in Pennsylvania, in West Moreland County, out by Pittsburgh. The former First Deputy of Montgomery County, Mike Paston, started this program and expanded it in Montgomery County, and then when I got elected here, I brought Mike with me, and then we started the program here. So where are we today? So first of all, DRIP stands for Delinquency Recovery Program. One of the first things we discovered is how much money is currently owed to Bucks County and its taxpayers and to the victims. And you can see it up on the screen, $200 million in change, so $200,878,000. That is not a small amount of money. $80 million of that is owed to the victims of Bucks County. So you imagine you were victimized 30 years ago, and you never got paid. Most of those individuals have basically written that money off, and sometimes they've forgotten the incident. And what we've been doing is, is we started a program to basically reach out to these individuals that have been in debt for, sometimes that have been in debt for decades, and we've shown them a path to get out of that debt. So how do we do it? So essentially, what we do is we reach out to them with a letter, and basically, you can see up there, we have, I'm sorry, this is, this is just a brief timeline of where we were within the process. So basically, what we do is we set up a letter with them, we call them in for a hearing date. Oftentimes, they will, they will call us, and we will offer them, basically, an opportunity to pay what they can owe. And that's really the central focus of this program, is offering them a way out of their debt, relieving them of the 25% in the added fee with respect to the collection agency, and then basically just saying to them, listen, you know, we know that you fell on hard times in the past, you know, you owed $2,000, you couldn't afford $50 a month, you couldn't afford $100 a month, what can you afford? And that response has been phenomenal. One of the things that we added in this program with my team is what, on top of the two additional employees to be able to do this, what we did was we started a texting program, where they would get a reminder when whatever their, their due date comes up, they just get a quick text message with their approval as a reminder, and it's been, it's been extremely impactful. Next slide for, for a second, please. DRIP hearing information. So you can see, we have about one to two meetings per month. The notices that are sent, so we've had two, like I said, for example, for July 14th, we had about 202 sent, and we had about 78 responses. Next slide, please. Since the beginning of the notices that have been sent, we had 2,616 sent. The number of calls and visits that we've gotten in response to that was about 814, I'm sorry, 884, which is a response rate of 34%. The response, assuming delivered, means, for the actual numbers, that we feel that, that it actually got to the individuals with a good address, they didn't have a bad address, we're looking at a response rate of around 43%. That is a phenomenal response rate, again, considering that this money has been laying out there in some instances for 30 years or more. Next slide, please. Okay, so the monthly revenue. You can see up there, it's been, it starts slow, forget June for one second, and forget January. January consists of about three days in the month of January. June was probably about a day. I do want to reiterate that when you guys approved, when the Commissioners approved this, that was in February. We brought our staff in in March, and then COVID hit two weeks later. So that basically put on severe restrictions, so the program did not start until June. So we were actually, at this point, we're six full months into the program. Next slide, please. So as you see, on November 30th, we hit $100,000. Delicious cake, bought and purchased by my First Deputy, Mike, thank you. So this is probably a little ahead of where we thought we were going to be at this stage. So just, I know the previous slide, you saw basically what we were bringing in per month. It's important to remember that every month, when we reach out to these individuals and we offer them a path out, we put them on payment plans. Some of them pay in full, but oftentimes, they will commit to $10 a month, $30 a month. So every month that goes by, we're starting at a higher level, so, you know, because of those, those payment plans. So the number that you saw on the previous slide went from 14,000, 20,000, 24,000, and that's going to continue to grow. So the length of time it took us from June through November 30th to get to 100,000, for each subsequent 100,000, it's going to get shorter and shorter and shorter and shorter. Next slide, please. All right, so that's including, so since the 100,000, so we're at 124,000, I just got an updated number, actually, including some of the time left in January, so add $16,000 to that, so we're currently at $141,655. So again, that is monies that were just sitting there, uncollected, you know, forgotten in often sense. And the one thing I want to reiterate that I think is also very important, the victims of Bucks County, the $80 million that I talked about, that's owed to the victims of Bucks County, we started going back to cases, because you have to, you need a starting point. So we started in, it was in 2005, and it was 30 years ago, so 1990. So 1990 cases and 2005 cases. So imagine being a victim back in 1990, owed who knows how much money, and then all of a sudden, 30 years later, you get a phone call from this county. So that is something that not only, that we are proud of, I think everybody in here should be proud of, because I think most often, you don't receive a penny for 30 years, you're going to write that off. But that's what we've been doing, is getting that money for not just the county, but for the victims. Next slide, please. So this just shows you actual of where we've been, and then projected. So the projections in the green kind of gives you an indication of every month where you add those, those existing payment plans. So again, every month, you're starting at a higher number. We had a huge month in September, I think that was some lump payments, where people paid in full, and then typically, in December is where you have a little bit of a dip. That happens under normal circumstances with, with the collections of court costs regardless. Next slide. And then this just gives you the full projection for the full year. Let me see if I have that number real quick. That would be the, okay, up at the bottom there. So the full projection that, that we've estimated is about $280,000 for the full first year of the program. So again, going over what I just already went through, the length of time it will take to get to the 100, 280,000 will be shorter to get that additional 280, and so on and so forth. This is something that builds, and it builds quickly. As a reminder, in Montgomery County, after about six years, they were up at around, I think it was eight million, I think, oh, 14 million, okay. So I'm not saying that that's what we're going to get to, so don't hold me to that, but it just gives you an idea of how quickly this builds. So, and next slide? So that's it. Any questions?
I thank you. You promised us that this was going to work, and it looks like it has, and I think it's, you know, a win-win. You're helping to make victims whole, and you're offering actually offenders a chance at some dignity to get this completed, so thank you.
Right. Thank you for a nice presentation, and I think this thing is working out, you know, 280,000, significant amount of money to bring back into the county. Just, just a question, any idea the additional cost to your department for collecting this money, so?
It was, I think, the additional costs, because we had to bring in, we wanted to say one and a half employees, so, so the one employee was specifically dedicated to this, this is, her name's Deanna, she was actually, was the one that ran the program in Montgomery County.
Yep, I remember, yeah.
She is a dynamo, and it was something where we wanted to hit the ground running, so we brought somebody in with experience. I, I think with respect to her salary, there's a, there's another salary cost with the other position, if you add both full salaries together with medical, I think you were around 130-ish, or something like that. So that's about where we were. But again, as you can see, was the numbers progressed, we're already going to more than beat that in the first year, we're going to double that in the first year. The second year, it, you know, it'll be a lookout.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Good, good work.
It's, again, I mean, it's good government, and I think, I wish, I wish, you know, maybe in a future time, Mike can speak to some of these hearings that he has. You know, there's, there's real emotion involved when someone finally digs themselves out of debt, and the fact that the county helps these people do that. So again, it's, it is, it's a, it's a three-way win. It's a win for them, it's a win for us, and it's a win for the victims of Bucks County as well.
All right, thanks. I know you mentioned you started out with 2005, and 1990, was there a third year that you're looking at? I think you're still rolling, looking at like three years so far, correct?
That's right. So, yeah, once you cycle through, then basically, then you just go to the next year in the cycle. So I think they added 1991. I'm glad you actually asked that, because another way of thinking about how this builds are the older cases are the more difficult. Obviously, it's been a long time, it's harder to track them down, so as you get closer in time, the easier it will become to get these people on plans and to collect the revenue. So they, so, right, so they just needed two starting points. They started with 1990 and 2005, so the 30-year point and the 15-year point. The third year they finally added was 1991.
Thank you to Mike as well, for his, for his work.
No problem.
Nice work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, checking if there's any public comment first here in the room, and this would be on agenda items, and seeing none, is there any that the solicitor has to, to report on agenda items?
Not for the agenda items, Commissioner.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, numbers one through 19, as well as the minutes from the January 4th, 2020 meeting? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, changes, or anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. As we move to the regular agenda, our first item there has to do with the Board of Elections, and Gail Humphrey, our clerk, will be talking to us about a contract for $13,095 with Grafcom in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, and this is a contract to, contract for mail voter applications.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for allowing me to talk about this. I think it's important for everyone who checked the permanent mail-in voter box on their ballot application, either the past general election or the primary before that, make themselves aware of this mailer. So under Act 7, under Act 77 of 2019, the state requires counties to mail out every February a ballot application to everyone who requested permanent voter status. That's both permanent absentee and permanent mail-in voters. After this law became effective in 2019, in the year 2020, the county sent out about 300 permanent absentee applications. After we went through the last primary and the presidential election, with the advent of mail-in voting, we are now sending that letter to 136,000 people in Bucks County that checked the permanent voter box. What voters need to remember and be very much so aware of is the application process still exists within law. So even if you checked the permanent voter box on the last application, you have to do at least one annual application every year to continue for us to be able to send you the ballot in the mail. So these letters should start to hit in early February. Everyone can either, of those 136,000 people, use the hard copy application we're going to send to them with that letter, or they can easily go and do it online. But this will happen every year until the law changes.
So a permanent is not permanent?
It's an annual.
It's annual, and we put that in the letter, didn't we? Changed it so it's clarified?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, and I think it's certainly something, I had the opportunity yesterday to testify in front of a Pennsylvania House Policy Committee about recommended changes to the election law, and this was one of the things that you had brought up, and our Board of Elections Director, Tom Freitag, had mentioned, that, you know, people check permanent, they think it means permanent. And so now, you know, having to do this, of course, it's, it's obviously additional cost to the county to have to mail out print and then mail 135,000, 136,000 of these. Certainly, many people will mail them back. Most, I would assume, would do it online, but then that means that our staff then has to go through all those applications, just like they did last year, which took up tremendous amounts of time, huge amount of effort on, on the part of our staff to have to do that. So it was one of the recommendations we made is, is if someone checks permanent So it was one of the recommendations we made is if someone checks permanent, there should be an easier way to verify that they're permanent. You know, rather than having us have to do this every single year. We don't get reimbursed by the state for this, at least, you know, at least, you know, it was not the recommendation I made that if you're going to make us do this, you should at least, you know, offer some kind of funding to the county to do this. So, but we know it's going to cause some confusion. We've already reached out to both of the political parties here in Bucks to make them aware so that if they start getting questions at their headquarters about why people are getting these in the mail, they understand it's a state requirement, something we have to do. And no one's trying to disenfranchise them because they could very easily say, well, I checked permanent voter, now they're telling me I'm not a permanent voter. Well, we're just, we're following the law. So, but.
And then I would just add, please don't wait till right before the election. If we have been given this opportunity, go ahead and send it now and let our staff start processing them so we don't have a backlog on the end.
Right, right. Thank you.
This is an unfunded mandate, isn't it? That doesn't quite make sense, since the word isn't right. Commissioner Dideralma? No comment? Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Thanks, Gail, for presenting that to us. And next, Evan Stone is here and he will speak to us from the Planning Commission. This is our Director of Planning. About a contract with ETC Institute out of Kansas, approving a contract to conduct a survey for the comprehensive plan update in the amount of $34,750. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me this morning. Yes, the action item that you have in front of you this morning is to approve a contract with ETC Institute. ETC Institute will help Planning Commission staff and I to develop a statistically valid survey. The plan is to mail out about 4,500 surveys to randomly selected households throughout the county. And out of that 4,500, to sample 800 to get a statistically valid sampling. As you'll see on the screen, this is really the kickoff to the update to the county's comprehensive plan, what we've called Bucks 2040. And I will add that it won't be our only means of outreach to the community. Naturally, with COVID, we'll probably be doing virtual town hall meetings. We will have a portal website where folks can go. We will also have an email address where residents and business owners and elected officials can, well, but hiring ETC is really the first step of the process to help us construct the survey architecture. And they will administer the survey. They will perform the results analysis on the survey. And then that'll allow us to get a snapshot of the issues that are most important to our residents.
Questions?
So what, how long a process is this in terms of the survey part? And then what's your plan for?
Right now, we have our kickoff meeting scheduled with ETC next week. And they estimate approximately a 12- to 15-week process from the time we start to develop the questions, get it out, get it administered, and get the results back.
And I think it's important for people to understand exactly what a comprehensive plan is. What you're trying to do is make sure that in all aspects of what the county's able to do and also feeding information to the municipalities, how are we changing or adapting or zoning laws? How are we adapting issues when it comes to transportation? When it comes to recreation? When it comes to economic development? How are we building for the future so that we know that we can, you know, keep people living in Bucks County who have occupations here? They're able to find housing here that they can afford? They're able to get around to the places they want to get around? They're able to enjoy the kind of recreation they want to enjoy? We have to be able to look forward to see some of that. I know, just as an, from my time as township supervisor, I know that there was a good chunk of time when development was happening in the lower end and other parts of the county where sidewalks were just ignored. Because everybody was driving and no one was really going to be walking or riding bikes anywhere because everyone was just going to drive everywhere. And starting, you know, it's about halfway through my time as supervisor, we started mandating sidewalks being put in more. Because we had a lot of people who just, you know, were walking in streets or riding bikes or pushing baby strollers in the street because there weren't sidewalks. And that's the idea of planning, that people want to be able, you know, at some point in the future, they're going to want to use some kind of means of transportation or just for exercise or just for recreation, just to get out. And if there's nowhere to walk, there's no sidewalks, then that makes it more difficult for them. And so that's the kind of thing you want to try and peer into the future a little bit and see what people want Bucks County to look like over the next couple decades? And how can we help make that happen? So.
Thank you. Couldn't have said a better question.
It's one of those things I think about, like, we look at all the things that we complain about development now, that if only they had done this 100, 150 years ago. Having said that, having turned 60 this year, looking at the 2040 plan is a little disconcerting to me. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
And I'd also ask Billy Barnes to join us. This is from Workforce and Economic Development. She will talk to us about a contract with Educational Data Systems. This we will be approving with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, Title I Contract for Programs, Activities, and Job Training for Underemployed and Unemployed Individuals in the amount of $1,893,969.76. Welcome.
That was a mouthful.
It was.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for having me today. I want to provide some details on those three contracts. But before I do so, I'm going to have to give a little history lesson. Just a brief lesson. So the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act is a federal law that provides workforce legislation to the states, to all of the states. And it's this funding from this law that requires and mandates, really, one-stop operating centers, right? And a one-stop operating center is basically an American job center. But because we're so fancy in Pennsylvania, we refer to our one-stop centers as Pennsylvania Career Links. And we have two locations in PA, one in Bristol. That's our main hub, our main career link. And we also have a satellite location in Purgacy. So these three contracts, the One-Stop Operator Contract, the Title I Provider Contract, and the EARN Contract are all mandated contracts to operate the One-Stop in Bristol. Okay? So let's just give an overview of the funding and how that works as well, quickly. So the Department of Labor, Employment and Training Administration, allocates money to the state. And then the state allocates money locally to workforce boards. So we are the Bucks County Workforce Board and we operate for the county. We operate the One-Stop Center, the Career Link, and we are responsible for all of the money that flows into Bucks County. The Title I Provider, that's the largest contract. With that Title I Provider contract, that funding pays for all of the salaries to operate the Career Link. And EDSI is the procured provider that operates that Title I contract. So that's salaries, that's training dollars, and that provides jobs for 13 EDSI professionals. That runs the gamut from case managers to job developers to business services professionals, you name it. All of those 13 positions provide services to job seekers and employers, right? So those are our two main customers, job seekers and employers. People come through our doors every day. We provide assessments, we help with resume writing, we help them get jobs, and ultimately, training to get them back out there and go to work. The second contract is the EARN Contract. That's the EARN Employment Advancement and Retention. And the easiest way to think about EARN is, the EARN Contract is specifically providing services to TANF recipients. TANF recipients, folks collecting food stamps from public assistance, and SNAP, right? And same thing, job seeker services, right? We provide assessment, we provide training, job development, and retention follow-up services. That contract for EARN under EDSI employs five people. And all of the supplemental training that is involved with that is part of the funding for that as well. And then the One-Stop Operator Contract, that's the last contract. And basically, we need someone to tie it all together, right? Currently, our One-Stop Operator is also EDSI. Brian Cummings is our Site Director at the Career Link. And because we have so many mandated partners on site at the Career Link, we need someone to tie that all together, right? So that One-Stop Operator is responsible for coordinating all of those services, keeping all of the partners in line, all of the day-to-day. Are the lights running? Are we having any problems with computers? That's the One-Stop Operator, all right? And that's one position. And then some supplemental funding that is involved with that as well. Questions?
No, and I will read B and C that you just talked about into the record in a minute. But questions from?
I think, I thank you first off for the explanation. I think it's important, especially now, we know people who have lost their jobs or aren't able to work, you know, they've moved from full-time to part-time. And that's certainly having an impact on people here in Bucks County. So they know there's, you know, hopefully now, they know, and we're going to do more of this, sort of publicizing the fact that we have the Career Link. If you're looking for work, go to Career Link. You know, you can be helped there. But I think it's also important, and I know you referenced this a little bit, if I'm an employer, if I'm a business owner, I can also call the Career Link.
Absolutely.
You know, because I could say, well, I'm looking for people that, you know, can operate forklifts. I'm looking for people that, who can do office managers. I'm looking for people to do this. And then, you know, the Career Link can then make those connections. You know, they can go out and find people who have already applied for those kinds of, coming, looking for that kind of work or have those certifications and match them with the employer themselves.
And just one additional thing I wanted to share to kind of put this all in context. So the Title I Provider Contract that serves dislocated workers and the adult population. Last year, we serviced about 350 individuals. That means they came through the program, we enrolled them, they enrolled in training, and then ultimately, we helped with job placement services. And then the EARN Contract, we served 97 people. Same thing. Enrolled in training services and ultimately placed them and provided follow-up retention services. So that gives you an idea of how many people come through the doors and enroll in each, under each contract.
Thank you.
Just want to thank you for your good work. It's extremely, extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And I'll just read in B and C. B is Educational Data Systems, approving EARN Contract to provide employment and training programs for TANF recipients in the amount of $520,651. And C, Educational Data Systems Incorporated, approved One-Stop Operator Contract to provide oversight of the Pennsylvania Career Link Bucks County facility in the amount of $173,519. Any questions on anything on the regular agenda? Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda items 20 through 22C?
Nineteen.
So moved?
Uh, yes, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. We can move on to personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions for today?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board appointments, Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, we have some reappointments. Area Agency on Aging, there are two reappointments. Beth Hudson Keller and Charles Pressler. Board of Health, two reappointments. Patricia Stover, Bill Roth. The Area Agency on Aging are three-year terms. Board of Health is four-year terms. I ask for a motion to approve those four reappointments.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you need us to, we need to make this motion? Like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Robert Harvey Jr. to the Conservation District for a one-year term. This term ends January 1st, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any other civics today?
I don't have any, no. I do not.
Moving on, the Chief Operating Officer's report, Ms. McKevitt.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. Just a couple of updates. One, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that out of an abundance of caution, the county offices will still continue to operate until February 1st by appointment only. So please contact the departments directly if you need services. COVID update, so yesterday, the state moved to 1A, into 1A. Folks 65 and older and folks who have underlying health conditions. So our staff has been working feverishly, day and night, to move those categories into 1A. We've updated our website. We have a pre-registration website where there are about 60,000 residents and folks have pre-registered. Please know that we are moving those folks into 1A so you don't have to sign up again or pre-register again. They will be moved automatically into 1A. With that, just so you know, our testing sites also will continue until the end of the month. There are three, they're at all three community colleges. They will transition into vaccination sites when vaccine is made available from the federal government to the state government and then down to us at the county level. Just a little information about the testing sites. The testing sites, we've done about 1,600 tests since they started. About 90 folks have tested positive through those tests. We are, our case, while our case count is still down, it is down from, it's about 22% since before Thanksgiving. We still are at an all-time high since we began counting in March. So when we transition into the vaccination sites from those three sites, the testing will commence. So that'll be at the end of the month. Beginning in February, they'll transition to vaccination sites. And then what will happen is our planning team of the Health Department and Emergency Services, our Planning Commission is helping as well. And then our IT team will work together with the company, AMI, on transitioning those sites. Also develop what we will call strike teams that will go out to senior communities, housing authority property sites, and other targeted areas to, and set up vaccination clinics for folks that will get emails from those pre-registration forms. So that is our plan moving forward. We are, as I said, our staff is working very hard to execute that plan. And we appreciate the guidance and support of the Commissioners through this process. So just hold tight, be patient, and we will, we will get this vaccination rolled out as we get the vaccine. And that concludes my report, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, the Solicitor's report?
Thank you, Commissioner. For last year, one of the steps that this administration took to protect county resources was enacting a False Claims Ordinance, which provides a number of powers to the county to protect its resources and make sure that it is not being victimized by fraud. Over the last year, since that was enacted, the Law Department has been working very collaboratively with the Controller's Office to identify areas where some scrutiny might be warranted. And really, one of the ways that these False Claims Acts work best is with the participation of people with information coming forward. That's one of the reasons that that act and subsequent policy by the Commissioners provides additional protections and incentives for whistleblowers, whether they be people who work for the county or people outside of the county. We are going to hit the one-year anniversary of that act in the coming months. And that should coincide with our updated website providing a portal for the public to provide information, whether they just have a tip or they have gone so far as to contact an attorney that has gone a little further in an investigation. So we look forward to rolling that out. And in the meantime, while we await our updated website, for anyone who does have any information to share about any suspected fraud, waste, or abuse, they can send that information for the time being to consumerprotection@buckscounty.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Solicitor? Commissioner comments? Mr. Dideralma?
Okay. Thank you. And hello, everyone. Big day for our country today. 11:45 or so, in about 45 minutes or so, we're going to have a new president and historically, a new Vice President. And I am very, very hopeful for our country, for our citizens, and for Joe Biden and Kamala Harris. Our country needs healing. We need an awful lot of healing. And not just healing among groups of people and citizens who live here, but I think we need healing also amongst our elected leaders. need healing also amongst our elected leaders in Washington and in state capitals, all around the country. And I think Joe Biden is the absolute right person for the moment that our country is about to go through. And I say that because of his speeches, his talk, what he's been saying since he was elected president back in November. And I also say that because I'm looking at and reading about what he wants to accomplish or tried to accomplish initially after he gets sworn in, not only today, and he's going to get started, but in the next coming days. And I look at the issues that he and the vice president are going to attack. Certainly, the coronavirus. Yesterday, we passed a number of 400,000 people who have been killed or died because of the coronavirus, and it's just absolutely heartbreaking. And I'm sure if the real number were known, it would probably be much more than that. So I, as I understand it, he's going to have an executive offer, executive order to require masking, mandatory masking for everyone that steps on federal property. And I think that is a good start. He is also, I think, within the next day or two, going to introduce another coronavirus relief package, which I think is very, very much needed. Additional money, they're talking $1,400 for people who got, received the check recently for $600. There is also money in there, which is important for Bucks County, for state and local governments, not important for our county, important for our state, but important for every county and state across America. I think it's critically important money that we can certainly all use. There's going to be an executive order for Buy American. Makes sense to me. I mean, you know, I don't know how far that executive order is going to go, but, you know, encourage everybody to buy American. There's going to be an order addressing racial equality. And I just think that's terrific. And I hope economic equality is part of that order. There's going to be an executive order, and I think maybe legislation on climate and the environment. I believe President Biden is going to be immediately rejoining the Paris Climate Agreement, which most, I think almost every other country in the world is part of. And we were pulled out of it, so he's going to be rejoining that. There's going to be an executive order and maybe legislation on healthcare. I mean, I would like to see at some point in time, and I know it's not going to be easy, where everybody in this country is going to be able to have some kind of healthcare plan. And as part of our county and also part of the country, I mean, Medicaid is so really, really important. And the expanded Medicaid has done wonders across the state of Pennsylvania and here in Bucks County to ensure people, people who are working, that do not have health insurance at their place of employment, and based on income, they now qualify for the expanded Medicaid. So I'm not quite sure what that order is going to look like, but I hope it addresses some of those issues. Immigration reform. To me, this is a really important issue. People forget that the last comprehensive immigration reform bill that was passed in the United States was passed under President Ronald Reagan. And it was actually an amnesty bill right away for the people who were here legally. I think at that point in time, there was a little over 3 million, 3 million people, and they became, not only became, you know, got a green card, but they became citizens right away. Now, I know President Biden's immigration reform bill, I believe there's additional protection for the DACA people, and that is, just absolutely makes all the sense in the world. These are young children, infants, babies that were brought here by their parents and grew up here in the United States, and they've had some kind of protection that was kind of shaky over the last four years. But President Biden wants to reestablish those protections, and they should absolutely, at some point in time, as quickly as possible, be granted, be granted citizenship here in the United States. But he's got a major immigration reform bill for people that came into the country before January 1st of this year. And, you know, it just looks really, really good, you know, a path to citizenship over eight years. So that's going to be a bill he's going to introduce. There's going to be an additional executive orders on national security, not quite sure what that, what that is, but I, you know, I think that's going to be really important. And finally, one of the other things he's going to do is extend the moratorium on evictions and foreclosures, which because of the pandemic, is really, really needed right now. We can't have people out on the street, homeless families, I mean, that just doesn't make any sense at all. So again, I'm very hopeful, I'm very hopeful for our new president. I'm going to pray, and I'm going to ask everyone and all Americans to pray for them, because they're going to need, they're going to need all the prayers they can get, because this is not going to be easy. And I'm calling for everybody across the political spectrum to keep an open mind, keep an open mind, and let's work together to make our country strong and to make our economy strong, and work together to have racial harmony. I think it's important, I think we can do it. And again, I think Joe Biden is the right person at the right moment in the history of our country to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well said, and thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. DiGialmo, for these comments. You know, it's, you know, certainly the voice of wisdom in many, many ways, so. And I think it's important, you know, we think back to two weeks ago, where we witnessed, you know, acts of really domestic terrorism perpetrated in one of the most sacred buildings in America. And we know that, you know, that act was committed by people on the far right wing of our political spectrum. But it would not have been any better if it were committed by people on the far-left wing of our political spectrum. It would have been just as disgusting, and just as barbaric, and just as un-American. We have, for decades now, because of a variety of reasons, and driven by a variety of engines, been pushing further and further away from the middle, to the left and to the right. Most Americans, quite frankly, are in the middle. But social media, the political parties themselves, cable news pushes people further and further to the edges and convinces them in many ways, and this is for the left and right, that I'm hearing on TV, or I'm hearing on the radio, or I'm seeing on the computer, or I'm reading somewhere, that there are people who believe the same things I believe, so therefore, you know, there's a lot of people who believe what I believe. And it's not necessarily, you know, the truth. Recently, I guess it was Monday, Sunday or Monday, the ABC News ran footage from inside the Capitol Building on the day of the attack. And there was one individual screaming at a police officer, you know, and he said, you know, "You can't stop us," something to the effect of, "You can't stop us." And he said, "There are millions of us out there," pointing outside. And clearly, there were not millions. You're dealing with people, you know, numbers of people, certainly, certainly it was a horrifying number, no matter what it was. But just the concept that his view was that there were millions of Americans who wanted that to happen shows the sort of cognitive dissonance, if you want to call it that, this sort of break from reality. We all need to take deep breaths and start remembering the things that we have in common on every side of the aisle and in the middle. We want good-paying jobs that help us put a roof over the heads of our family, put food on the table. We want to know that we're safe at night and when we walk on the streets and when we're going out doing what we want to do. We want to be able to, you know, buy things for our kids when they need things, and even buy things for them when they don't necessarily need things. We want to be able to take vacations and know that we don't have to pick and choose, you know, what can I afford to do? And we want a country that is strong and safe and where we all can be treated fairly, and know that we're being judged by the content of our character more than anything else. And so those are the things I think everybody believes and wants out of this country. And I certainly share the hope of Commissioner DiGialmo, and I'm sure many of the people, if not all the people, hopefully everybody in this room, when we say that, you know, in roughly 31, 32 minutes, we hope that we're turning a page and moving into a better America. So. And the other thing I just want to touch on, echoing Ms. McKevitt's comments earlier, the announcement yesterday, much like the announcement that was made, I think it was last week, by the federal government, moving people 65 and over, people with healthcare and health conditions into a more immediate category, was not something, that announcement made by the federal government, I think a week ago, was made without the knowledge of the states. The states were all stunned when that message was made, when the message that came out yesterday from the state was not shared with the counties ahead of time. You know, had it been, we could have been changing and updating our website, so we were ready for it. We've done that before over the past year with COVID announcements. And so, you know, the simple fact of the matter is that we estimate, just in Bucks County, we estimate approximately 120,000 people are 65 and over, just in Bucks County. For the next 10 days, we have been allocated about 4,000 doses of vaccine. And we already had people scheduled for this week and next week for vaccinations at our mass site in Middletown. So we are taking, you know, the names, we're taking pre-registration, we are categorizing people, so that when we get to that group, we can be able to communicate with them. As Ms. McKevitt said, if you're 65 and over and you already registered for 1C, which was the phase that was originally geared for people that, that group, or if you had a healthcare condition, if you've already registered, you do not need to do it again. Our IT staff has the ability to sort people and move them into the proper field. Everything relies on vaccine. The federal government has not been shipping it out to the states. The states therefore can't send it to us. So again, something we hope changes in the next, or begins to change anyway, in the next half hour or so, and move more aggressively. So until that happens, we are doing the best we can with the very, very limited resources we have. So it's, we're asking people to be patient. You know, I've used this phrase, you know, I think about the, you know, when I was a little kid, going on lawn drives, vacations with the family, you know, going down to Disney World in the, in the orange and brown-paneled Chevy station wagon back in the, in the late 70s. And, and other trips I've taken as a parent with my kids. And the longest part of the trip seems to be that last hour. It's, it's like, it seems to crawl, you know, because you know you're so close to being home. You're so close to sort of like getting out of the car and stretching your legs and, you know, and letting the kids go to the bathroom and all the thing, you just, you know you're so close, and that last hour just seems to drag. It seems like the road's not moving and the car's not moving. And I feel like that's where we are. Everybody knows that we're so close, and they can just sense it coming, and they just, it's, and time seems to stop. But we are, we will get there, you know? So I just ask again for your patience and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Is there any public comment, any brief public comment?
Yes, Commissioner. We received a comment from Tom Tostie of Middletown Township. His original message contained comment that was well over the word limit, but he, he sent a revised version, so I can send the commissioners the original and just read the revised version in the record?
Sure.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tom Tostie. I am the Director of ASME District Council 88, representing 14,000 employees in eight counties in southeastern Pennsylvania, including the staff at Neshamani Manor. I am also a resident and taxpayer in this county. I am submitting this public comment to address your decision to mandate that our members at the Manor get the COVID-19 vaccine, COVID-19 vaccine or be terminated. Personally, I will be happy to roll up my sleeve to get vaccinated when it is my turn, but that is my own personal decision. There are many Americans, including many who work at the Manor, who are hesitant to be among the first to be vaccinated, particularly when the vaccine has only been authorized for emergency use and is not yet approved by the FDA. A month ago, my staff reached out to County Human Resources and asked what plan the county had for vaccinating county employees. She was told that you didn't have a plan. She asked that you reach out when you were ready to develop a plan, so that we could work with you to facilitate the rollout of the vaccine. The county never contacted us, you just started to distribute the vaccine at that time on a voluntary basis. But you, Madam Chair, heard that the numbers of volunteers were low and stated that you will mandate workers to get the vaccine or else be fired. Instead of taking ASME up on or offer to work with the county, you simply laid out an ultimatum. This was a complete failure on your part. We were ready to work with the county to help get people vaccinated, but instead, you said they will be fired, which only makes it harder for us to work with you on this.
Any other public comment?
No, Commissioner.
Any other questions, comments?
No, thanks.
Or a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please leave adjourned.